Go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's April 10th, meeting is regular, meeting of the Barstown City Council. If any groups or individuals would like to address the council this evening, if you don't have anything to be said, don't have any bids or anything with HRB. If everyone had a chance then to review the minutes of our April 3rd working session, if there's no additions or corrections, we'll put them on the items to set. The financial report, I just would report Tracy has got the first rough draft, I guess, of the budget submitted, but we're still kind of in flux waiting to hear what's going to happen with the state budget and pension and those kinds of things. So it's kind of difficult to plug an actuary of number into some of our salaries and benefits until we make sure that's going to be solid. But hopefully after April 15th, we'll be able to nail those numbers down and get a little bit closer to some hard numbers. Anything else you want to report on that Tracy?
No, I understand that. Or you said it all, I'm sorry.
We've got all the partners that submitted their budget requests, so we've got that part. We're now starting into the five platoons, we probably get some numbers we can hold on to. Okay, I've asked both the police and fire department chiefs to be with us tonight. Last Wednesday we had a monthly staff meeting, they had some reports on their staffing and operations, so I wanted them to have a chance to share that with the council, with the media. So start with Chief Cressing.
So just kind of to start off on our staffing, when I was hired in back in September, I came in with the department and we were at 21, our staffing was at 21, so we had six vacancies. So I'm glad to report today that we are now at our authorizing for sworn of 27 officers, so we're fully staffed agency as of today. We're just waiting right now on Frankfurt to sign off on our last officer and hopefully we'll have him in place sometime this week or next week. So we have 27 sworn officers and a civilian staff of three, which gives us a total of 30 people at Barstown Police Department. So that is exciting times for the Barstown Police Department that we are not filling any vacancies and we're able to move forward with our agency. With our schedule, when I arrived, the department was operating on a 12-hour schedule. So that basically what that means was you took everybody on the department, the sworn staff, and you put them in, you split it in two, and they worked 12-hour schedules. The problem with the 12-hour schedules was we were paying quite a bit of overtime to operate that schedule. And it was, it came out to be about 1,300 hours a year, which was approximately, caused our agency about $40,000 in overtime to run, to keep that schedule going. So I've just recently switched the schedules to operating on a 10-hour schedule to save that money, and it also is a better schedule. The 12-hour schedule is, it's an exhausting schedule for officers, just working 12-hour days. And I think we have some better benefits with the schedule that we're operating on, but it still has good benefits for the officer and for family life, family life balance for them. And so with this 12-hour schedule, it consists of three platoons, and the times that we have, our first platoon, which is our day shift, starts at 7:00 in the morning and then they work till 5:00. Our mid-watch, which is our second platoon, comes in at 4:00 in the afternoon and they get off at 2:00 in the morning. And our third platoon, which is our late watch, comes in at 10:00 at night and works till 8:00 in the morning. So you'll notice there's an overlap of one hour between our day work and our late watch. And what that one-hour overlap does is it helps alleviate any overtime expenses with late runs or late arrests, and it gives officers time to actually come on the street and the other officers to clear and to get off the street, to keep those expenses down. And you'll notice by design, there's quite a bit of overlap between our mid-watch platoon and our late watch platoon. So there's a four-hour overlap between when our mid-watch and our late watch comes on, with our mid-watch working from 4:00 to 2:00, and our late watch starting at 10:00. And so what we've done with that is, instead of being a reactive police department, we are doing some proactive policing. So every single day during that four-hour overlap, we have some officers that just takes calls for service, and then we have the other group of officers that are on detail. And so the details vary from foot patrols, warrant details, traffic details, hotspot policing, which hotspot policing is just basically, we have areas in our community that are problematic and we have crime issues, and we focus in on those areas, and we're also focusing on open-air drug markets. And so you're going to see officers out, we have more officers out during that overlap, and they're out there proactively policing our community. And so that gives us an opportunity to have more officers on the street, to utilize our resources more effectively and not costing us any extra money by doing that. And so it's been very successful so far. We've just have implemented these schedules for about two weeks, and we, with the weather that we've had, we've done quite a bit of foot patrols, warrant details, traffic details and things like that, and they've done quite a bit of work in our open-air drug markets. So it's been successful, and we're very excited about moving and shifting into being proactive instead of reactive with our agency. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. The bodies would be staffed properly and have some shifts that are a little bit better managed.
Yes, sir.
Chief Malo?
If my voice gets out, forgive me. I asked Mary to send everyone a attachment. If you need a copy, I have extra copies for you and so forth. Just to run down how do we operate. Under administration, you have myself, Assistant Chief Montgomery, a captain and lieutenant. In the daytime, I will be responding in a command vehicle, and these other three communicate with each other, and that's one of our engines out. We have three platoons consisting of five full-time firefighters on each platoon. We are currently at full staff other than one spot. We swore in, we knew firefighters a couple meetings ago, and I had to jiggle some scheduling around because I didn't have drivers for every platoon. We got to have somebody who can drive fire trucks, I didn't have some EMTs, so I asked one of our firefighters, would he mind moving to another shift? He told me he was fine with it, but the next day he ended up quitting without even talking to us and so forth. So now we have that spot open, and we're currently in the stages of taking new applications to fill that spot. So with each platoon, we will have five that works 8:00 to 4:00. And then at 4:00, when the administrative people go home, we have a part-timer comes in. They work from 4:00 in the afternoon to 8:00 in the morning. That still gives us two units with paid people on it, and then we move somebody over at 4:00 with the part-timer, and that gives us our third unit. So we have three units that will roll out the door. That's going to help out tremendously with the ISO inspection, they do go through with that. It looks like we have a lot of people who go through this paper, but how do we operate it does it? Like I said, under part-timers, I have no one for first platoon. We're in the process of interviewing someone to get two new part-timers on that platoon. Second platoon and third platoon, we do have two people in each that work part-time for us. We have one junior firefighter. I have moved one of my firefighters over to handle the junior firefighter and volunteer retention program. Hopefully we can work on getting the new junior firefighters in. That's a good opportunity for volunteers down the road and stuff. If they start out when they're 16, 15 years of age, by the time they turn 18, they can roll right over into the volunteer spot, because they have all their state hours. So he is working on getting that up. Currently, we have 18 volunteers. Out of that, four of them are support personnel only. In other words, they do no firefighting whatsoever and stuff. So that narrows us down to 14. And out of that, we have three of them that are not in, I guess, good standings, they're not giving us anything. So we're going to be talking to them, trying to get more out of them. How the voluntary program works, they can pick either a 12-hour shift or a 24-hour shift, and they come in, they stand behind their own crew. We found that works a lot better than the old days, and pager goes off, if you're free, you come in and so forth. Most people work two jobs, some of them work three jobs and stuff. This way they can pick, okay, I want to work this day, these hours and so forth, and they will be at the station and a part of the crew. And then we're getting ready to start April 17th, a volunteer class. These are new firefighters that are coming in. We have, I don't know, it looks like maybe about a dozen. Out of that, it will take almost a year to get these people up to speed and actually where they can be on a fire truck, and we have to watch all of them, but we don't have to be so careful with them and so forth and stuff. And I'm happy to say, out of these new volunteers, several of them are females. I'm very excited about that. And except, we have, we were short three in the month of February, and we've gone through a lot of overtime. Friday, for instance, because of the new people still aren't up to speed and so forth, I have three overtime spots out of four people on that shift and stuff. So we might have to be coming back and adjusting our overtime a little bit. We're working out, we're moving our training, Lieutenant Scott Lawson is going to be going to a 24-hour shift temporary until we can get these new people up to speed and so forth. So that's going to help us out some. Myself, I told them I'd be happy to come in and work 12-hour shift, 24-hour shift, whatever they need and so forth. So we're trying to watch our budget on the overtime until we can get everything up to speed and stuff. That all I have.
Chief, how much, I know there's a lot of training in the signature before you can have a firefighter certified to drive an engine or ladder. About how much is that?
Hour-wise, I don't have it all. I know there's so many classes that they have to take and so forth. We're working with the ones that can't drive. Every day, we got somebody out teaching them and so forth. We're speeding them through it quite fast. We don't want to go too fast on it and so forth, and that way you get in an accident and say, oh well, you know. Normally it takes 12 weeks for them to get qualified, and you did it in three weeks. We don't want to be put in that situation and so forth.
Well, that training, that's why sometimes you see some of our engine or a ladder truck around during the day, and it's not necessarily lights on or whatever, the training mode that's just not out cruising. A lot of it has to do with how many hours a firefighter has to have before he's going to be certified to operate that vehicle, depending on your own words.
A good example of that was today, they had one of the new guys out, they left the station about 11:00, and they didn't get back until about 3:30, and they were out just doing drive time and pump time with their jumpers.
Thank you, Chief. Did anybody have any other questions? Okay, I'm going to move down to these two resolutions. The first one, Resolution 2018-05, this is, I'll have the city attorney read it, but it was a requirement for our KIA loan for our chlorine project, so Tim, I think I'm asking you to read that.
Mayor, I can read that. Resolution 2018-05, a resolution of the city of Barstown, Kentucky approving and authorizing assistance agreement between the city of Barstown, Kentucky and the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority, whereas the city council, the governing authority, and the city of Barstown, Kentucky governmental agency has previously determined that it is in the public interest to acquire certain facilities and improvements of the governmental agency's water and sewer system, the project, and whereas the governmental agency has made applications of Kentucky Infrastructure Authority, the authority, for the purpose of providing monies to construct the project, and whereas in order to obtain such improvements, the governmental agency is required to enter into an assistance agreement with the authority. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Barstown as follows. Section one, that the governing authority hereby approves and authorizes of the assistance agreement, authorizes of the assistance agreement between the city, between the governmental agency and the authority substantially in the form on file with the governmental agency for the purpose of providing the necessary financing to the government agency for the project. Section two, that any officer of the governmental agency be and hereby is authorized to direct and empower to execute necessary documents or agreements and to otherwise act on behalf of the governmental agency to effect such financing. Section three, this resolution shall take effect at the earliest time provided by law.
Okay, thank you. Tim, as I said, this resolution is part of the requirements for the KIA loan agreement. Can I ask then for a motion to approve the resolution 2018-05?
So moved, Mayor.
Motion of Councilman Williams, who has a second.
Second.
Second of Councilman Doze. Any discussion? All in favor, simply about to say an aye?
Aye.
I oppose. Resolution is approved. Then the next one, Resolution 2018-06, it's another requirement we're going to use area development funds for the Lincoln Trail Area Development District, which there's ample funds in there to build another Welcome to Barstown sign. It's going to be located out on Louisville Road, 31E North, approximately across from, that part of that new road is now completed. We thought it was appropriate to get a sign out on that part of town. Across from Delaney's, there is a state right-of-way, there actually, there was a right-of-way there that used to be where they realigned Old Dazworth Road with Plum Run. So if you go out there, you'll see we've got some flags and showing where we're going to put it, but we got approval from the state for that. But again, to apply for these funds, because Lincoln Trail, we need to pass this resolution, so I ask the city attorney to bring that.
Yes, sir. Resolution 2018-06, whereas the city of Barstown has applied for area development funds, ADF, in the amount of $8,173 to be used towards the cost of construction of the Welcome to Barstown sign located on Highway 31E North, and whereas this project is estimated to cost $9,673 in the city, we use the entire ADF allocation of 8,173 towards the Welcome to Barstown sign project. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Barstown will utilize the money from the city's general fund to cover any costs incurred over the amount of the area development fund allocation.
Just an aside of this is that, I guess, our timing, we're kind of running a short string because the budget that was passed by the House and Senate has gone away with area development funds for all ad districts going forward. Of course, that one's gotten vetoed at this point, but if they keep it, that veto gets overridden, area development funds are going to disappear, which is a hit. These are funds that are shared by all the incorporated cities in Nelson County as well as the Nelson County Government. So they're not a large amount of money, but it's always good to have them for funds like this. We've used them in the past. New Haven, Bloomfield, Fairfield have also used them in addition to that, so in the county. So at least give the chance to utilize these funds that are in the current budget year with Lincoln Trail as well as its state budget. I ask for a motion then to approve Resolution 2018-06.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Copeland, who has a second. Second of Councilman Doze. Any discussion?
Mayor, are these signs very similar to our yellow ones?
Yes, they'll be the stone signs like we have on 245 and out on New Haven Road. It's going to be a combination, the budget is a combination of us doing some of the work in-house, then of course we have to hire a bricklayer to do the stone work, and then a siding company will actually do the siding. So it'll be a combination of us and those two vendors doing that work, but it'll be identical with the other two. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, simply about to say an aye?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, next item, we have a request from KBC, the Kentucky Black Caucus, for local officials on the Spring Summit. There's a letter here. Councilman Sheckels, would you like to address that?
Well, I think, I think everyone, all the council members have got a request for sponsorship of a part of this summit, the hospitality portion of the summit. We have quite, we have several different entities within the city that have joined together to help promote this Spring Summit. You all have the, you have the details, you have the agenda, and this summit is put together every year in different parts of the state, notably in larger cities in Barstown. But every time we get an opportunity to showcase our city, we want to put it in our best light. And the request from $500 from the council's contingency fund and $500 from the mayor's contingency fund would help put this right where it should be. And you saw the, you saw the KRS section from our city attorney, how you can use these public funds to, because this hospitality symptom is going to be an invitation for all people of the cities, city and county officials, local business leaders, and quite often to help showcase our city. And when we have the KBC Leo and our co-sponsor, our co-chair, Ms. Keisha Copeland, we asked the city to join us and participate in this annual summit.
Okay. Tim, anything else I have?
No, I just, I talked to Councilman Sheckels, actually immediately after the last meeting about, you know, the criteria that this KLC has provided for the use for private entities, use of public funds for private entities, and in this particular case, it's similar to, in my opinion, it's similar to, you know, authorizing payment for, like a conference registration or something like that. In this particular case, what we're going to be doing, and Councilman Sheckels has graciously offered to ride her over, is to sponsor that evening event where everyone, local officials, elected officials can come in and network and provide, you know, it'd be a nice opportunity to network and provide educational opportunities for, you know, a lot of people in the community. And I feel like that meets all the three criteria that they have there that are laid out in KLC. Obviously, meeting those criteria doesn't mean that you all have to approve it. That's discretionary on your own part, but I don't think there's a problem with allocating the funds.
And just for the early dollars, there's ample money, both in the council contingency and the mayor's contingency. The council's got a little over $6,000 in their contingency, and the mayor's contingency has a little over $8,000. So there's ample money, so Councilman Sheckels, would you like to make a motion to utilize?
If it'd be in order, I'd like to make a motion that we approve $500 from the mayor's contingency fund and $500 from the council's contingency fund to go towards supporting this hospitality event for the, from the KBC Leo Spring Summit.
Okay, we have a motion, Councilman Sheckels, who has a second.
Second, Mayor.
Second of Councilmen, done with any other discussion?
The only question I have, do we have to make, the council has to approve, is the money out of the mayor's contingency, and that kind of hits discretionary? I guess it doesn't hurt, I mean, doesn't hurt anything, but just for future reference.
I'm okay.
Okay, if you're okay with it. I figured you were, but I mean, just as far as future precedent, that if something came up that you want to go and spend it out, I just didn't want to start a precedent that you had to have the council approve.
I think, I think you're right, it doesn't hurt.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, God. I may have paid the rest of that, or all that side, I don't know. That's kind of the difference on that side. Okay, we have motion second, any other discussion? All in favor, simply about to say an aye?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion's carried. Don't have any cemetery deeds or announcements. I'll go back up to new business number 11, city officials' compensation. There's a, I don't know how long ago it was, but I think it was a story in the Standard about sort of the county officials' salaries and so forth, and I think some are going to get raises this year due to population changes and so forth. And then when I saw the magistrate's salaries published, it just made me think, you know, as many years back as when I started, that there hadn't been any raises for the councilman's pay since, I think, going back to Dr. Harry Spalding, which would be over 20 years since the last pay raise was implemented for the council. So I thought, with everything that's changed in that amount of time period, the size of the city, the dynamics of what we do, and the amount of time required for service, that at least we should have some discussion that maybe it's time to consider an increase for the council members. You know, it's, to me, it's volunteerism on steroids with people would still be working today, doing the same job, they'll get the same pay as they were 22 years ago, not many people operate that way, and I think it's time for that, for us to consider that. And the other thing is, you know, in most cases, we've been blessed that council members can get away from their jobs and, you know, go to meetings during regular business hours and so forth, but, you know, you can't always guarantee that. I know that some elected officials have to take personal time without pay, they have to use vacation days and so forth in order to meet their obligations. So when you're, when you're a council member and you're only making $750 a month to do this work, to me, it would be, you just can't guarantee that you're going to have, always have six people that have that ability without it being a financial burden rather, to be, you know, if you worked in a manufacturing facility, they might give you the time off, but you're going to lose the wages that you give up by being away from your regular job. So I think long-term, we might need to increase the pay for that reason. And, you know, the city, you know, we're a little different than most cities our size, where you have, you know, six utilities. It's a pretty complex business when you're dealing with, you know, electric, cable, internet, water, sewer, full-time police departments. Full-time fire department, most police departments are all full-time. I don't think I know of any part-time police departments, but cities our size, they'll always have full-time fire departments. So that, I just wanted to bring that up, maybe have some discussion about. I don't have a recommendation for you in terms of financially. Tracy and I are doing some back checking, I guess, on what some other cities, research, I guess, on some other cities our size, to see what they pay, and then we'll be sharing that with you in the future. Some cities, you can look at it two different ways. One could be based on population, the other one could be based on the size of their operation. You know, you have some cities, you know, has as big a population as us and they only have 30 employees, because they basically have a water department and a street department, you know, part-time fire department. So then there's cities like ours that have, you know, over 150 employees and, you know, a $53 million budget. So it's a lot to keep up with. So I'll open the floor then for some discussion if you're all live.
I think that the discussion is fine, Mr. Mayor, but I think, I think the mayor should also be included in that, in this conversation. Because I'm almost positive there's not been any increase in what the mayor's made over in that same period of time.
I think that's correct.
Yeah. And I think we all know now that this mayor's position requires a whole lot more time than it did years ago, and in your case, I know you were very dedicated and you put in a lot of hours. And I say a lot, I mean, I would hate to guess, but I'm saying at least 30 hours or more a week that goes toward this job. And I think that needs to be part of the conversation.
Well, I appreciate that, and to this point I made earlier about not ready to make a recommendation, the same with the mayor's position. I'm looking at what some other cities do in terms of mayor's compensation. One idea I have had recently is that, again, because of the size of our city, and actually the way our organizational chart is, I'm also considering the possibility of bringing up the idea of a city administrator's position, which we had years ago. You know, some people will say, well, it didn't work out. The fact that, you know, maybe a hiring choice didn't work out, that doesn't necessarily mean the position shouldn't go away. It'd be like saying, Chief Cressing had a captain that didn't work out, well, you don't eliminate the captain's position, you go out and find a good captain. the captain's position, you go out and find a good captain if you have that situation. Our organizational chart is pretty unusual for an operation our size. When you have a $53 million company, and we have about 10 subsidiaries that operate in that business, and you've got all the 10 heads of those subsidiaries reporting directly to the CEO, which is different. Most operations like that, you would have a COO, Chief Operating Officer, or you'd have some executive vice presidents, you know, handling some of the work coming up from those subsidiaries. So it is a big job, and it's a job that I enjoy and I make the time for. But the same point I made with the council members, you're not always gonna be able to go out and find, you know, someone who would be well to be mayor and who can make the time or can get away from their workplace enough time to make it work. And you can find retired people, or that might happen too. But most of the mayors in the past have all had full-time jobs along with being the mayor, which again, as the city has grown and as our services have grown, the number of people we serve has grown, the job has grown. So I'm thinking about that as a possibility, particularly since we're in our budget thing. So before we get through all this discussion in the coming weeks, I'll make the recommendation one way or the other, whether I think the idea of a city administrator, and if we can afford it, make that work or not.
I'd like to make a comment about that. In a mayor's council form governing system we have, the mayor is gonna be the final say-so regardless of what you have. And if you, if people vote for the mayor of this city, the council member of this city, and a constituent has a complaint, they're not gonna wanna talk to the city administrator. They didn't vote for the city administrator. If they want their situation, their problems corrected, they wanna talk to the mayor. You know that, I know that, and any of you all that have been involved in the city government, they expect that. And of course, you know, fortunately, with you and with me, thanks to you, of course, that I had the flexibility of coming and going and doing, and you have done. Of course, we've sat 15 feet from each other forever, and so you've seen me in operation, I've seen you in operation. And we've just been fortunate enough, the city of Barstown has been fortunate enough to have people like us that took this serious enough to do this and make time to do this. But the situation is not always gonna be there that people like me or like you could do this. And Barstown's in a situation now where we almost need a full-time guy to do this job. And of course, unfortunately, by KRS statutes, running a $53 million company, you're still limited about how much money you can make, because that's a side of KRS statute. So you're not gonna be overpaid by no stretch of imagination. But in looking at this whole thing, and from being, from where I sit here and where I sit there, if you're, if we're gonna have a chief executive officer, it needs to be the mayor. Mr. Bob.
I was, I have to be the city attorney on the last survey of the salary is there for the councilmen back in March of 1998, it was under Dr. Harry's area, so that's right at 20 years ago. And I got on the website, looked up, see what the, under the federal website where you can look up, see what a dollar back then, what it would take to buy today. To have a dollar, same purchasing power of a dollar back in March of 1998, you would need a dollar fifty-three today. So it's, you know, a 50% inflation thing. And then when you look at the magistrate's pay, you know, they get an automatic cost of living adjustment each year. The city council does not get that. And of course, one reason this has to be brought up at this time is that it's increased pay, I think it goes from city officials, I know it was for county, you have to do it in the election year. So if, you know, you increase your pay, you vote to increase it, you know, they can vote you out, you know, if they didn't like that. But here, you know, the mayor's salary is $1,500 a month, you know, a $53 million entity we're paying, you know, just a very pittance, you know, of it, most department heads, and I would say virtually, well, every city employee is making more than the mayor, unless there's a part-timer out there that's not working full-time is making more than our chief executive officer of this city, you know.
Exactly right.
And so I think the mayor's pay and I think the council pay also ought to go up with it as well, so we can be sure we draw people who maybe have to sacrifice something on their job to be here, so we can get the quality people to be on the council. That, you know, the magistrate, you know, the mayor's making just a little bit more than the magistrate are, and that, you know, than the mayor, I think. Even though it's been, it's a part-time job, I know the hours have been put in, and I know it's more of a full-time basis on, for hours, hours, and, you know, that's not just during the day, doing city business, attending all events that you're expected to go to on weekends and calls and everything else.
While we're discussing, you know, they should offer an opposite side or an opposite view. And I totally agree that the mayor's position should be commensurate with the responsibility. That is something I completely agree with. That, you know, we're in a point right now where it just doesn't look good as far as budget constraints and things that we're facing, you know, in the upcoming budget year. So it's something that we should probably look at and discuss, you know, as that also being a consideration. I think I can speak for most of us here that we didn't get it into this for the money. And I think that it's a feeling of community responsibility that brings us here. So just to offer an opposite. Thank you.
I understand and agree, and so I really have made a final statement. I think I told a lot of y'all, I don't probably intend on running next year, so it's not a, something that's gonna really benefit me, but I think it's important that we adequately compensate all our city officials, even the city council people, even though I'm not gonna benefit. I don't know, unless it goes in effect July 1st, or, I don't know when it has going, is it January 1st?
That's what I was gonna say. It's January 1st. There's a section in state law that says that it's to be set by ordinance, it's to be set by the first Monday in May in the year that the officer is elected. So this year, you actually would have the ability to, you would have perhaps, maybe a little late, but to set the mayor and the council, and that it can't, it can't be changed during the officer's term of office. So if you all decided to do it in August or something, what you would be doing is you'd be setting it for the mayor's term after this next term and for the council's term two years in the future.
So if we're gonna make it effective anyway, we've got to pass it before May of this year?
That's correct. May 1st, the first, I'm sorry, the first Monday of May.
First Monday of May.
So that would almost require a special meeting.
Well, and I just followed what Councilman Shekels said, but I do know there's a number of cities around us that have both full-time and part-time mayors that do have city administrators who have had for a long time at Vanvoe, E-Town, Lebanon. And so the administrator position, to me, sometimes could bring some continuity, you know, if mayors change, you could have a long-serving city administrator that brings continuity to the job and knowledge and so forth, so just an idea.
Well, you don't have to pay a city administrator more than you can make rest of the statute.
Hopefully. I would suggest that I wanted to make.
Well, yeah, you can't just get anybody to fill this position or the mayor's position. We realize that. You gotta know what you're doing, and you gotta know and be confident about what you're doing. But like I said, if a mayor's council form governs, people want, they wanna answer to the mayor, just from.
We will pass it by May 1st this year. The mayor's salary won't be changed over four years, or you council for two years, since we run it over correctly. Two years.
Well, I'm gonna finish. Tracy and I are gonna do some more research we've been already doing, so I'll try to get you all some of that information fairly soon, maybe later this week, y'all can be thinking about it, and then we can talk about it at the next meeting if we have to, if there's enough support to justify an ordinance change, we'll maybe have a special call meeting before the end of the month. I wasn't, probably should've checked the view a little earlier, or I would've brought it up a little earlier. I thought we had to the end of May.
The people, the funny thing is, is that, and I don't think this is anything that shouldn't be disclosed, but when I talk, the mayor mentioned to me about council people, and then I talked to council people, several council people said, I don't know, you know, similar to what Councilman Doe said, when I said that someone had approached me about the mayor's salary, this mayor told me, no, I don't think that's something we should really consider. So it was, it didn't sound like, you know, everybody was, which I think is admirable, by the way, that people were saying, no, not necessarily for me. But yes, that deadline is, it's a little problematic, and it's there for the exact reason, the Councilman Keller was saying, is that you then answer to the electorate that fault.
Can you check on one other thing for us? The, you know, magistrates, they have a cost of living thing, is that a possible thing to add if something was done on the salary? Because it's a, like I said, everybody's reluctant to raise their own pay and everything, and it's been 20, it's been so reluctant, they've sat there for 20 years, and it might be something we need to look at.
It, by just lancing through the materials I have here, it looks like, they talk about the rubber dollar theory, it looks like it could be passed where it would be consumer price indexed. But I'll check into that in a minute.
How soon would we have information back from you about particular positions such as the city administrator versus the full-time mayor? And then when would we be able to get some tables back in reference to the increases for possible pay for the council and the mayor?
I have it till you probably by the end of the week, if not sooner. We've already got some, we just haven't got it all. I just saw some of it this afternoon, just first time I looked at it.
Can we say before the first Monday, or?
Set by the first Monday, which I would interpret as before.
Should that mean Friday?
First Monday.
Friday.
Yeah.
That's really quick.
Okay, any other discussion?
I really would like to see this thing kind of move forward quickly. I think it's time.
I do too. I would like to see more information on a full-time mayor as well. I think that the city needs a full-time mayor. I mean, you're putting in hours that are unheard of, and, I mean, I appreciate that, and I'm sure the community appreciate that, but we have to be responsible enough to say, hey, you know, especially with the mayor position, you deserve to be paid, you know? And going forward, after you're gone, how are we gonna get a candidate, you know? How, we're gonna start at round zero. You know, after you guys are gone, we're gonna start at round zero, trying to get someone to do a job that no one's gonna come in and do on a part-time basis. They're just not gonna be able to. Our society is not moving in that direction. And volunteerism is really, it's almost a dying beast.
Well, you said we'll have the information sometime this week. Hopefully we might get, and some of the information I'll have, you'll see mayors that are full-time pay and some that are not, in some cities, you can kind of tell the difference when you look at the pay ranges, so. And I concur, you're overworked and underpaid. Does that sound like it tonight? I think I sound worse than I feel like, but I'm getting better. Okay, well, thank you all. Anything else? We don't have any other, no cemetery, excuse me, we do have two cemetery deeds, no, excuse me. Yeah, I'm sorry, we don't have. Any other announcements? Okay, if not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Reeves, we have a second.
Second.
Second to Councilman Doe, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.